It's six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting, September 11th meeting?
Yes.
Any comments, changes? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve. Minutes from previous meeting.
Okay, any other discussion? Take a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item, review preliminary plat for Newton Parks and Public Works addition.
Attached is a preliminary plat for the Newton Parks and Public Works addition submitted by Garver on behalf of the applicant city of Newton for property that is located on the north side of East 12th between North Duncan and I-135. The property of the plat is listed as attachment A. As per the city subdivision regulations, the preliminary plat was submitted for the appropriate city staff and area utility companies for review along with a request and forward proposed changes and comments. Those changes and comments were communicated to Garver who will provide an updated version of the revised preliminary plat incorporating the request and comments. Staff continues to work with the applicant on a few items noted under recommended actions. The preliminary plat now comes before the Newton Planning Commission for consideration. If the commission is satisfied that the requirements of the applicable subdivision regulations happen or will be met by the developer, you may approve the preliminary plat including any required and requested changes. The requirements that we're still working on them, you can see as follows. Then, recommended action is that Newton Planning Commission approve the preliminary plat for Newton Parks and Public Works to the city of Newton, Harvey County, Kansas contingent upon engineering staff receiving and adding up comments noted above. And most of these have already been taken care of, the list gets smaller and smaller since my memo has been written.
Okay, any questions for staff? I just had one question, fire, the fire department looked at this, I had actually two questions. Are there any improvements planned for the site?
There are, and that's why they're having to do the plating of the pro- plating side of it. They won't, we wouldn't be able to pull our own permits for a project out there, they're trying to do another basically Morton building out there.
Okay, I wondered about fire protection and spacing between fire hydrants if that's been run through the fire department.
It has been, yes.
And Chris Bones here with Garver, if anyone has any questions for-
Yeah, good evening commissioners, Chris Bone from Garver, 1995 Midfield Road in Wichita. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is the city of Newton. We have been working with Justin and his staff on addressing those comments. The fuel island, so you know, I think is planned on being removed, so that's one thing. And then given the, it's grandfathered for the stormwater quality as it sits, but there are some credits if you will, as things are removed, you can add, so I think the whole idea is that this new Morton building can kind of fit within that, that confine. If not, then the stormwater quality ordinance will have to be implemented along with any stormwater detention requirements. So, we're all on top of that and understand. And we're in agreement with the staff comments and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Cool, thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Is there a motion to accept? Preliminary plat?
I'll make a motion to approve pending all of the, get all the requirements met.
Thank you.
That are pending.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I really wanted to vote no. Just, just the city of Newton.
Just because the city?
Just, yeah, she would've been here. Attorney would've been here.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, next item is consider approval of Foxridge addition setback variance lots one through 11, block six. Justin?
Yes.
You want to go through that?
Yeah, this is a request from table 3.5 of the general bulk regulations to have a, instead of a 25-foot rear setback to a five-foot rear property line. The following are staff and applicant comments based on the standard for granting variances. A, explain how the variance request arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zone or district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant commentary. This request will facilitate the construction of a two-family home with a front porch facing southeast 10th street connecting to the proposed sidewalk and utilizing a detached rear loading garage connected to southeast 10th terrace. B, explain how the granting of the variance will not adversely adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents commentary. This request will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners since the site is not yet built and will be mo- and will be marked to all future residents with this two-family home configuration. C, explain the new, explain how the strict application of the provisions of the zoning regulation of which variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. Commentary, the zoning regulations contemplate that the garage of the front of the home for block six lots, for the block six lots will face southeast 11th terrace. The configuration will place the front of the home with no driveway, just a sidewalk facing southeast 10th, looking into reserve F. D, explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety morals, order, convenience, prosperity of general welfare. Commentary, no adverse effect of the public health, safety morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. The homes will remain two-family with a more modern market-driven layout. Explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations commentary. The variance will not change the general spirit of the intent of the zoning regulations because there is no, there is no material change to the function of the lots. The variance cannot be granted if even one of the above conditions is not met. Variances are not for the correcting mistakes that cause the property coming into non-compliance with a particular code requirement. Variances are not for situations where complying with a particular code requirement is inconvenient or more expensive. If this variance is approved, the applicant owner will be allowed to build a rear lot at a five-foot setback on lots one through six, block six. And the attachments are as follows. Recommendation, the planning commission can either approve, deny, or reduce the variance request.
And to be clear, that's lots one through 11, block six, is that right?
Correct, and that is in the, what I would consider a light orange on that map.
Where exactly is that located? As far as off Kansas Avenue?
Kansas Avenue would be on the far left-hand side of that screen.
So it's not close to that?
Correct. Your property in question there is the, if you put your mouse down about an inch, is your property. Yep.
And we, we will hear everybody in a minute here, so be patient. Does commission have any questions for staff right now? I had a few. And Chris might be able to help, this is yours, Chris, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So the reserve area, what's allowed in the reserve? What, are utilities allowed or?
Utilities, confined easements, landscaping, parking. So, the idea is, do you have that other little sketch that we submitted with it?
Yeah.
So here's kind of the idea, if, if I may, I hope I'm not out of order here.
Go ahead.
Again, Chris Bone from Garver on behalf of Brian Legali Homes, the applicant. So, up on that drawing, you can see two little sidewalks that go out to a sidewalk that's running east and west and some parking. All of that is in the reserve and that will be part of the street plan, so there'll be some little pockets of parking. And then since there's a reserve on the south side of southeast 10th that runs the length of these 11 lots, the, the builder would like to put the front porch of the home facing out north to the reserve with a sidewalk to the, to the street sidewalk. And then that allows some space for a backyard behind the duplex units right there that you can see, it's a dual unit. And then with a 20-foot setback off southeast 10th terrace have two, two-car garages that, that face southeast 10th terrace. So it creates a backyard, each side would be fenced, so you have a backyard, a detached garage, and then a front porch that looks out over the reserve and onto southeast 10th street. It's just a new market-driven product that he's had a lot of success with in other areas and he would like to build these 11 lots in that configuration. And then the nice thing about that walk, if you go west, it ends up in that reserve which is the drainage way that goes through the old, the golf course property. So it gives you kind of a direct path to, to that open space and that's the idea behind it.
Are there any easements in that reserve then?
There's a sanitary sewer in the reserve itself, yes, but it doesn't conflict with anything other than a sidewalk crossing. Because the home itself would be back five feet.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like on the sewer location of it, how far off the easement?
I don't remember how far it is, but it's inside of the reserve.
Okay.
Not on the lot side.
And what was the, what's the platted setback require, right?
That was considered a rear yard setback, so I think it was 25 to begin with.
Twenty-five feet?
Yeah, but again, this is because the front of the home will be there, not the back of the home. If you're, it's, we're flipping that home around.
Correct, yeah.
And the garages are a single structure, here are there, are there two structures?
There, they'll be, it'll look like a single structure, but they'll be abutted together.
Okay.
So that'd be a four-car garage, two for each side of the two-family home. And I'll stand for any other questions.
And I assume single-story high on everything?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know the answer to the question. It would be limited by the zoning, whatever the height of the building could be. But I don't know what the plan is for the height of those, that's a good question, I don't know the answer to it.
I don't think we have any height in our zoning there.
No, until you go to commercial, then you got your maximum heights, but yeah.
I have a few concerns with the sewer being in there with the, if the sewer was put in without backfill, you know, compacted backfill, there's been issues before having houses too close to a sewer trench is one thing. And also to get to the sewer if it was ever needed, make sure we had enough space.
I can probably look it up, I may have it on my iPad, if you want to know that distance, I'm happy to look it up as you deliberate it.
That would be nice to know.
Okay.
Yeah, do you, any idea depth of the sewer?
Five feet, six feet?
Pretty shallow.
It was very shallow. But I'll look that up and then if you have other questions, I'll come back up.
Yeah, do you guys have any other questions? Okay.
I hate to, you know, keep killing a limit to single-story, I mean, I just, I, we have that ability, I hate, I hate to over-
Not with this variance there, the request and the setback variance.
Okay, I do have another question for Chris, please, done looking that up. I guess the-
Yes.
The question is the unnecessary hardship on the owner by granting this. He has quite a bit of back room between the house and the garage. So, I, I mean, that's kind of the, ends up part of the question I have is what's the unnecessary hardship on him of building this 25-foot versus five-foot?
Oh, it's just to have the porch closer to that sidewalk system. It's more of a neighborhood feel, that's the whole point of it. To not be so pushed back off of a lot and utilize the sidewalk on southeast 10th and the, than the reserve. Again, there are just spots of parking along the way, the rest will be landscaped, so just to create that, it's just a different market feel.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's nice to have the reserve to give a buffer between the, the street and the lot. But I think, yeah, going to five-foot is not much there.
I, I understand that, but, I mean, it's, it's five-foot, but it's not like it's five-foot off the street.
Correct.
You know what I mean?
Right, you got the reserve.
It's an open, it's an open-
Be 30 feet off the street, I mean, the, yeah, the reserve is 25 feet wide with five extra feet.
Right, right, so it's not like you're building it-
And then 14 and a half feet from there to the back of the curb, so it's going to be back visually,
Quite ways, yeah.
But it's close to the walk and that was the point of it.
Most people driving through there won't know the difference that there's a reserve there and it's just-
That's correct.
A 30-foot setback.
That is correct. It's five feet, that sewer's five feet north of the south reserve line, so it'd be 10 feet away from the front of the home. And it is about six feet deep right there.
Could you go back to that previous screen? So what's the, what, remind me, what did we do for zoning? Like across the, south across the street from that, is that, is that, what, what do we, there, do you remember, is it single-family there or is that also R2?
You can go scroll through these and I think we have another. Keep going. So all this is what our zoning is around it, well, no, go to the next, keep going. Keep going. This one.
It's, it's all, everything around it's two-family zoning?
Two-family.
Yeah, or three, I believe.
We didn't have that in our packet, right?
The zoning?
Oh, maybe we did.
Did I miss that attachment?
It's in the packet, page 27.
I got you. No, that's not it. What, what page did you say?
27, is kind of what the zone, current zoning is, so like south of-
It's all two-family.
Yeah.
On that whole east side of the plat, other than that, that abuts the existing single-family homes, everything there is C3 zoning.
Okay.
Or R3, I'm sorry, R3 zoning, yes. So it's common zoning to the south and to the lots to the north.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Chris at this point? Okay. We have people from the public who want to probably talk, so we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone here want to address this or talk about this?
Yeah, my name's Alan Whacker, I live on 721 Country Club Drive. And my back lot butts right up against this.
Okay, can you point at it on the map?
We are 12, 12 and 13 here.
It butts up to the yellow, so it butts up to the yellow, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a single-
Yeah, the properties in question are the ones up to the right.
Clear down where the orange is at.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the or- the ones in the orange are the only ones that would have the five-foot setback.
No, I've got a 200, since you're going to send out stuff that is only within the 200-foot range, why did I get a letter?
That over the next case?
Yeah, it's, it's-
I've got one on five-foot setback and one on zoning variance. Letter on each.
It would've been whatever the-
Must be, yeah, it's less than 200.
These homes were built up here with a smaller lot depth-wise because there was a country club behind them. And now to take that away and leave just a five-foot setback back there, my, my house is within 20 foot of the property line already. And then you give another five-foot.
Yep. Like, like mentioned, the only ones that are getting the five-foot are the ones in the orange.
The ones in yellow will be getting the five-foot.
Yeah. Yep, I, so you're within the 200 feet or the, when we did the title search-
I'm not within 200 foot.
So, the, the orange to the right.
Yeah, right over there.
Yeah.
So it was just the list, the list that we would've got from the title company that gave us that list, so.
Is there anyone else to speak to the subject? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? I think the, with the sewer, I, we, we can, I think basically we can approve the, the variance, we can, we can alter the recommendation from five-foot to a different distance or not granite. So, having the sewer in that location, I'd like to have a little more separation myself and put the building setback a little further back than five-foot. But I'd entertain that from whatever the commission thinks.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, next, one more, Chris. Consider approval of Foxridge addition zoning district amendment, lots 17 through 24, block one, lots one through 32, block two, and lots three through 14, block three. Justin, you want to go through that?
Yes, and I'm doing this one for Chris as he is out tonight. Attached for your consideration is an application for a zoning district amendment submitted to the Newton Area Planning Commission. The applicant requests that the below-described properties be rezoned from R1 to R3, city of Newton zoning classification. Additional information, a map showing the surrounding properties, zoning designation is included following this report as attachment F. The action taken by the planning commission following the conclusion of a public hearing will take the form of a recommendation to the Newton City Commission who have final authority to act upon the request. The criteria by which the applicant for the zoning amendment must be judged or set forth in the zoning ordinance of Article 1, Section 1.10-4, subsection D.1. Findings must be made on each of the five following points, it is not necessary for commissioners to find that all factors lead to the same conclusion or even that the majority of factors indicated one way or another. It is possible one or more factors may be deemed so significant that they outweigh all others following each standard or their comments and observation staff. A, whether a change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the regu- of these regulations with the city's adopted comprehensive plan re-newton and other adopted city policies, plans, programs, ordinances, rules, and regulations. Staff comments, when considering a change of zoning classification for any piece of property, it is necessary to consider whether every use that would be permitted under the request classification would be appropriate for the property and the surrounding area. Not just focus on the use that the applicant indicates is intended for, intended or is presently being employed. This is because there's no way to prevent the applicant or the future owner of the property from using the site for the, any, using the site for any or of the other uses permitted under the requested classification, in other words, the use of the property may not be restricted to a particular use contemplated or in extents when the request is made, but may be included, but may include any use allowed within the zoning classification. Please see the map included as attachment F for a graphic representation of the zoning of the surrounding properties. B, with, whether every use of the, would be permitted on the property that were reclassified would be compatible with the uses permitted on the property located in the immediate vicinity and whether the subject property is suitable for the use to which it has been restricted, staff comments. R3 zoning provides for, provides for, provides for specific activities including but not limited to single-family dwellings, townhome dwellings, two-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, lodging, flexible multifamily developments, childcare centers, churches, and other places of worship, daycare homes, historical sites and structures, libraries, schools, and museums, public parks and playgrounds right away after, and public utilities and railroads. Any other businesses deterred by the zoning administrator to be general character as listed above. C, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public service exists or can be provided to serve the use that would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified. Staff comments, city water and sewer extensions will be, will need to be occur and are occurring for the new development depending on the proposed layout, lift stations and upgrades to lift stations could be required for sewer as well. Property owner and developer will need to work with the city engineering office to determine the required improvements. D, whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of these regulations, staff comments. Staff is not aware of any errors in the application of the zoning regulations to be corrected through the requested zoning amendment. E, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of change of, change or changing conditions of the area affected and if so, the nature of such change or changes, conditions whether the proposed amendment provides a disproportionately greater loss to the individual land owner, owners relative to the public gain. Staff comments, the demand for R3 multifamily housing is greater than R1 single-family housing. Again, when the planning commission considers a change of zoning classification for any piece of property, it is necessary to consider whether every use permitted under the requested classification would be appropriate for the property and the surrounding area and not just focus on, only on the particular use that the applicant indicated is, is intended or presently employed. It's also important for the commission to include in their motion the reason or reasons for approval or denial for the zoning request, the need be no more than a referencing element of the staff report, whether the motion is to approve or deny the request, it should be based on whether the land is appropriate for the proposed zoning classification, the attachments as follows. In the recommended, recommended action, the planning commission's decision to approve or deny the requested zoning will be forwarded to the Newton City Commission for consideration, the recommendation will be on October 24th, it sets the 10th, but it'll be the 24th, which is a 15-day waiting period for the city commission meeting.
Any questions for staff? What is the area specifically showing on the map?
It's the other two colors on there.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So yellow stays R1 and green would change to R3?
Correct.
So just a question, why is the request R3 and not R2? Since the, the request was for two-family dwellings, just asking.
That would be an applicant question.
Okay.
What did you, what do you assume it was for two-family dwellings?
It was noted in their application that it was specifically for two-family dwellings, which is a little more restrictive than R3. Is anyone with the applicant here? Chris?
Good evening once more, Chris Bone from Garver on behalf of Brian Legali Homes. R3, that's what the rest of the two-family homes are, are zoned on the east side, the east half of the property. With the exception again of the ones that we're abutting, single-family homes, those are single-family there as well. The R3 with the building setbacks and bulk regulations fits the product better, so that's why it's an R3 request. Again, the yellow perimeter, all that is, is zoned single-family right now, it stays single-family. That is not part of the request, it's, this isn't-
Only the green.
Only the green, the green is interior to the site and that's the area on which we're requesting the R3 zoning, and it's just the market that's driving this, he's found a great demand for these lots with the R3 zoning. And they, they will build out the single-family perimeter as well, but the R3 is really the, the driver for the market right now. And that's the reason for the request. Similarly, it helps a little bit on the special assessments. When you look at the site as a whole, there are some off-site sewer improvements, part of which were done with the phase one improvements, a new force main line from the lift station along Country Club Drive, that was part of the requirements. On this one, the heavy lifting, as we go to phase two here, it's not a zoning consideration, but there's a pretty large bridge structure that has to go through the, the swale, if you will, the drainage way through the golf course area. And everyone in the addition will help bear the cost of that, so that would help a little bit on the- that would help a little bit on the affordability front. And that's the reason for the request, and I will stand for any questions.
So the pumps and the force main were all sized for the?
Mm-hmm, yes, um, the City of Newton, um, with putting in the force main with the other project, the City of Newton was going to take on the rehab of the lift station proper. And then um in return for that, the connection between Kansas Avenue and Fourteenth Street connector will be made suddenly when that Box Culvert and Road comes in, which gives two entrances to the Country Club um community to the north, which they have one now down Country Club Drive. So that was just a deal that, that evolved over time. So Foxridge Edition will take on the hundred percent of the costs of the, the box bridge for the drainage. And it'll, it'll afford a, a level of safety, just that connection between Kansas and, and, and the connector. So that's how that all played out when we platted it.
Anyone have any other questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this one. Is anyone here to talk about this subject? No?
I have a question.
Yeah, come up to the front please, to the podium, and state your name and address.
Uh, Betty Whacker, seven twenty-one Country Club Drive. Now, on, on the yellow, you say those are single family homes?
Yes.
But you were showing a picture of a duplex with a dual garage.
That's on the other side.
That's in the orange area.
That was a separate.
Oh, that's clear down there.
That was correct.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Now, when you talk, on the green, when you talk about, you're saying multi-family, are you talking duplex town home?
Two family, yeah, two family duplex.
Not, not anything larger?
That's the plan.
It would just be a?
Not an apartment complex.
No, it's platted, so they're individual lots, so the, the home's gonna have to fit in the confines of the lot. It would have to be replatted completely.
Yeah, and it would have to come back through us to get approval to do that.
That's right, it would come back again.
That's, just one clarification.
Okay, no, absolutely.
My name's Kiera Wilson, I live at one thousand South Kansas.
Can you step up, uh, I didn't hear what you said, sorry.
My name's Kiera Wilson, I live at one thousand South Kansas, and so ours is the only house, or the only lot that's shaded in yellow. That isn't, so it's the, the.
Oh, on Kansas.
On Kansas.
Okay, yeah.
The, that lot, yeah.
Yep.
So, we currently have a house on that lot. So I guess um, my question is, since our house is, is inside of the addition, it looks like, since it's shaded in yellow, um, my question has to do with how does coating to R three change our property value that already exists? Like, will it, the coating affect us property value wise? And then also, um, where was I going with that?
I think you're shaded in yellow because you're, it's R one, right? Is that the reason?
Well, none of the rest of them are.
Oh, okay.
It's a lot that it.
Addition is all three sides of the glass.
Can I join the conversation?
Yeah, yeah, please do, yeah.
I guess.
Are you sure you're not one parcel south of the yellow that's shaded there on the south of the road?
No, that is us.
That's, that's definitely us.
That is our.
Just a little tiny batch, and this is that big empty lot.
Okay, so you, so which lot is your home?
This one right here.
And you, that's, okay. Okay, well that is.
An error.
That's an error.
It would be an error with highlighting then, because that would, it would already be single family zoning. And we did put single, so for lots one and two, and if I shaded that incorrectly, I apologize. But the two lots, one and two, that are just to the east of you will be single family as well. And that was the point of leaving the buffer.
Uh-huh, continuing from that, I guess, anyone on either Country Club or Kansas having them shaded R three, or not shaded, but zoned um multi-family versus single family, like, how does that affect our property value, like, are, is it worse off for us having multi-family dwellings next to our properties? Or, you know, are we gonna be, you know, in the worst? Because you're putting so many families in a close vicinity to our house.
I, I don't have any comment on the market value, that's not part of the zoning process.
That's all done by county, the city doesn't do any of that, I'm not sure as well.
Whether citizens are better off or?
Be devalued.
Yes, it's, whether citizens are better off or worse because of the zoning should be a zoning opinion, they should have a say or, you know, an opinion on that, so. Oh, yes, never mind. Yep.
This is my husband.
Oh, yeah.
Reece Wilson, one thousand South Kansas. Um, you mentioned the community paying for the sewage, I wouldn't, wouldn't catch all of it, but is that included the people who already live there, is that gonna increase anything, just the new stuff? Okay.
No, it doesn't include, I'll just make that for the record.
It includes no other properties except those within the amended final plat of Foxridge Edition.
Okay.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Any comments? Final comments?
So when this is approved, does it have to be approved in entirety for R three? Or can you restrict that R three zoning to be?
It would have to be as a whole.
It would have to be entire thing, you can't.
That's what their request is, and there's, it's different from a variance, so. Again, what is the difference between R two and R three?
Um, I would have to go get my book, there's a whole list of different things from an R two. R two is, R, R three is less restrictive than an R two.
And snapshot of maybe what the restrictions could be?
They're on there, look on page thirty, thirty-three.
Okay.
Look on page thirty-three.
Yeah, R three.
Includes all of the, that list.
Yeah, R, R two doesn't have like multi-family dwellings.
The lodging.
Yeah, so the question was.
Churches.
If he's specifically requesting two family dwellings, which was specific to his request, that would be more restrictive than R three, and I would be more inclined to look at that favorably to, if that's what he's wanting to do.
The developer's intent is to build two family homes on these lots.
Yeah.
So um.
Yeah.
Whatever action you feel is necessary to take. I know in every zoning district comes with it a lot of different rights. Some by right, some by conditional use. So the idea here was to use the bulk regulations on that, which I believe our side yards are a little less on R three than R two. And it just allows for the, the, the market, the product that's going to be built there. But no, the intent is to build a home, a two family home on each of those lots. That's his intention, and that's the request for the zone change. Hope that's, provides some clarity.
Yeah. Justin, can we, can we have you get your book and see what the difference between R two and R three? And my reasoning on this is I've, I've seen a lot of developments that started out with fantastic intentions that didn't get finished as a result of those same intentions. So um, I am a tad concerned. Um, and like you, I'm, I'm interested in knowing if, if that's all I wanted with, with, was town homes, duplexes of some kind, then, then why aren't we doing R two zoning and not, and why are we going for R three zoning?
Yeah.
Um, it just raises a question in my mind.
Yeah, yeah, that's mine too, yeah. Yeah, 'cause we have to remember even though the intent is, that's what its intent is, we're approving this for future use, so.
And it opens it up for everything else.
And I want him to check the bulk regulations.
Yes.
Particularly, 'cause that's.
It may not change, that's why I wanted to know.
Right, right.
It's R two maybe.
And if memory serves, it was the bulk regulations that were different, so. But he can answer that question.
Yeah, yes.
That's cool. You want to talk about anything else while we got a minute?
No, you probably don't want to hear me talk about anything else either, so, we'll just wait for Justin.
Okay, we'll wait.
Probably could find him.
Justin?
The zoning.
Oh.
You actually could on the website.
Online, yeah.
I don't know how to pull up the actual regulations.
Uh, go to Planning Commission, I looked them up before. Well, these guys have looked them up before, I'm sure.
How long ago was the initial uh plat on this done, do you guys remember? That's a good question, um, it wasn't, wasn't a long time ago.
Yeah, Chris, you did the plat, right?
We did, and I think that plat was recorded probably last September or October.
Yeah, so pretty recent.
In sanitary sewer construction, is that right? No, it's probably a little bit earlier in the spring, it, it's taken a bit to get the, the, the project bid for the sanitary, which started a month ago or so. So it's probably about three months before that when the, when the plat was finalized, so I guess that would be like April or so, April or May.
Of twenty twenty-two.
Of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, it, I think it was recorded this year.
Okay.
If memory serves.
She's almost got it.
He beat me. Oh, wow, okay.
Page twenty-two or so, twenty-five, somewhere in there. Yeah, just keep going till you find a table. Yeah, there's your, right, yeah, go back. Right there's the.
Those are just the.
The titles and then it. Yeah, go down a little bit, yeah. Keep going. There you go.
Oh, yes, the dreaded table.
There's one with setbacks too, the setbacks and.
Yeah.
That's the one we're looking for.
The three that would get removed from the R three to the R two would be the multi-family dwellings, the lodging room and fraternity, and the flexible multi-family developments would be the difference between R two and R three.
And I would say with those, you could strike those as part of the R three, 'cause I'm, I'm pretty sure it's the bulk regulations that he's after for the, for the building offsets and such, building setbacks.
You, so do we have the ability to do that?
You do not have the ability.
That was a question I had.
Do not have the ability to do that, it has to be an R three zoning, we can't restrict for anybody that, you know, them or anybody else, it's, we can't look at it as what they want to use it for. 'Cause it could be sold off tomorrow and an R three zone would be considered. So the setbacks are platted right now, correct? They're not.
They're dictated by zoning, they're dictated by zoning.
Okay, yeah.
So if you could look at the side yard between an R.
Yeah, yeah, the side yard.
Two and R three, please.
I think these are going to be.
I can't read that. I don't have that good of eyes.
So right here is the R two, and here's the R three, and these lines right here are gonna be the setbacks, so it would be like these two.
So two is what?
Um, this is R two right here.
Okay.
And this is R three.
Yeah, so I can't read it.
I can't read them.
Yeah, so what are the setbacks?
Seven, seven foots.
Okay, and.
Uh, on R two and seven foot on R three.
Go, Aubrey, go back up, I, R two I think is a different column, go, go, go further. Yeah, that's R two, R two's there.
It's right here.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's seven foot side.
Seven foot on side.
R two.
Single family, on town home, it's five foot side on R two and seven foot on R three.
So R two and R three have the same side setback.
Not, not on the town.
Not on a town home, but.
Yeah.
On a single family they do, or duplex.
Rear setbacks.
Rear are the same, twenty-five, maybe.
If this is a point of contention, if you want to table it, and I'll come back at a different meeting and get clarity for you, I'm fine to do that.
Okay. Commission agree with that?
I don't want to leave you in an ambiguous spot. He wants to build duplex two family homes on these lots, and I know that for a fact. And as I recall, we did look at, there was some difference between R two and R three that was favorable for the building of those.
And you could bring that information back, why he wants.
And I would bring it back, and if it changed to R two, then I would, I would reapply or make a request. I don't know if you can from the bench change that at a meeting, I think you can. You think you can make a, a more restrictive zoning from the bench? But I would bring that back at the next meeting and have those answers for you.
Yeah.
If, if that gives everybody a comfort level on this.
Commission's good with that.
Yeah.
Table it in the next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Let's, let's make a motion, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we table this still in the next, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no, motion carries to table. Okay. Next. Consider approval of Van Sickle Edition final plat. Thank you. Justin, you want to lead us through this one?
Yep, as soon as I find my spot.
Yeah, that's two, give us a second.
Forty-six.
All right. Um, attached for, a final plat for Van Sickle Edition submitted by Baughman on behalf of the applicant David and Judith Van Sickle for property located on Cottonwood Hills Drive between Lazy Creek Drive and Cory Road. Um, the property is listed as attachment A. As per the city subdivision regulations, the final plat was submitted to the appropriate city staff and area utility companies for review along with the request that they forward proposed changes and comments, those changes and comments were communicated to Baughman who will provide an updated version of the revised final plat incorporating the requests and comments. Staff continues work with the applicant on a few items noted under recommended actions. The final plat now comes before the Newton Planning Commission. For consideration, if the commission is satisfied that the requirements of the applicable subdivision regulations happen or will be met by the developer, you may approve the final plat, including any required and requested changes. The remaining requirements are just listed below. Um, it is recommended the Newton Planning Commission approve the final plat for Van Sickle Edition to the City of Newton Harvey County contingent upon engineering staff receiving and adding of the comments above. And I think there was like two things left since my report has been sent out.
Uh, any questions for Justin? A part of the last, when we considered this before, we had the, there was a question about petitions for extending water in street, passed the law, right?
Correct.
That was resolved?
Yes.
Okay.
We're working on that, that's in the attorney's hands at the moment, so.
Perfect. We have Phil Meyer here from Baughman, if anyone has any question, uh, you have anything, Phil, you can?
I'll keep it simple, all, we're in agreement with staff comments, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay, any discussion? Entertain a motion if anyone sees fit?
Your turn.
I move that we accept the final plat uh, if it meets the requirements as specified in the report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second, all in favor of. All in favor of approval on the final final plat for Van Sickle addition, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no. Motion carries. Yep, thanks, Phil. Uh, next, review zoning regulations, article twelve for information only. Uh, anyone have any questions about that for staff right now?
No, other than um signage, it's a big deal. We made some changes.
Yes.
Any, been any complaints?
Um, there's been a few, um, on our like developments, we would not allow them to have a monument sign, which seems kind of ridiculous, 'cause every development has a monument sign. So that will be a change that I know that we'll have to bring forward, but that was the big one, so.
Hadn't thought about that one, mine was more along the lines of we've allowed a lot more video boards.
Yes.
Around, any, no complaints on.
Complaints on that.
Too bright, too.
I haven't had anything like that.
Okay.
We had one right away when we did the uh variants for the one by the high school, but they dimmed that and brought it back down and appeased the neighbors on that one, but yes.
Yeah, and that was a mis, that was, that was a misplacement too on our, our end, so. We're we're better now on that.
We've learned, yeah.
But nothing downtown?
Correct.
Okay.
You haven't had anything heavy Rebecca in historic sign?
We'll see what happens with Cedar Village fires up here.
Well, you know, you always worry when you have, you know, some residential properties that are close by.
Mm-hmm, right.
Your businesses, and that's, that's where I worry about, you know, like your video signage.
Yep.
So not hearing any, that's, that's good.
Well, we can get in further discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we needed to kind of prepare for that or not, or if we're good.
Well, I'll make sure I look at that section.
Yeah.
At least read it.
And that is my plan next um meeting that I bring back chapter, or articles one through twelve to review as a whole with all of our changes. So if you have changes, that's the time to bring them, discuss them. Not necessarily will we take a vote to them, that'll be your guys' decision.
We'll move on to uh old business, uh, changes updates to article eleven. You want to have any comments about that, that was the parking.
Mostly parking, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I really didn't have any comments about it, I looked through it. Had too much other stuff to look at this meeting.
Well, I I guess my only part, back, back to again, any, been any complaints? I know we've, we've had a lot of even some new construction stuff. And I know we modified some of that new construction parking when we did it. Um, so no, been no issues with it when you have the new guys coming in, new stuff coming in?
Nope, I've actually had uh three other municipalities reach out probably in the last month asking if they can borrow our, our uh parking ordinances and stuff right now, 'cause they like the way they look, so it was a plus. Usually we reach out to them to borrow from them, but they're actually looking at ours now, so.
Well, our biggest change, of course, was big commercial. Big box, we, we're not requiring near as much parking as what we used to require, so.
One and a half instead of two.
Right, I just didn't know if that had changed, you know, when you have some newer stuff come in.
It hasn't at this point, so.
Yeah, looked into me, I, I didn't really see anything. Cool. Well, if there's no questions, uh, we will close this meeting down. Turn it over to Greg for the historical preservation meeting.
Yay.
And we listed it as a train, so there's.
Just turn it over to her.
Yeah, for sure.